Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the committee of the whole meeting to order. It is Tuesday, November 13th at 7:00 PM. The first item on the agenda is real call.
Rusado.
Here.
Atack, Stark, Chancet.
Here.
Salvati.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
O'Brien, Callahan.
Here.
Meitzler.
Here.
Malley, Uer, Saron.
Here.
And McFadden.
Here.
Okay, so we do have the necessary form to conduct the business tonight. If I could remind everybody to please use our microphones so that we can make sure that all the viewing audience at home can hear everything we've got to say and also to make sure that we've got it on the recorder to the best of our ability. Would appreciate it. The next item is items to be moved, added, or changed. And I know we do not have the presenter here for item number five, so we're gonna take that off the agenda tonight. Otherwise, the agenda will remain as printed in a matter of time, since we do have quite a lot of things on the agenda tonight. When we get to the community development items, I've talked to Scott, and he and his crew are just gonna present each item very quickly, and we'll get through them to the best of our ability so we can get onto the budget. Next item is item three, which is matters from the public for anyone that would like to address us for an item that is not on the agenda. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on then to the consent agenda. We've got two items. First item is 2017 Fire and Police Pension Municipal Compliance Report, and then item B is 2018 Fire and Police Pension Tax Levy Request. Any questions or comments on either of those? Hearing none, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Meitzler, second by Salvati, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, those will go on to the city council. Next item then will be ordinance 18-70, amending the official zoning map of the city of Potavia for 1500 West Wilson Street, 137 Feast Drive, 1227 Bradford Circle, City of Potavia's applicant. Drew?
Thank you, Chairman Brown. The ordinance that's before you tonight would rezone the three properties that are city-owned, these are all kind of relatively in the same area, and I'll put them up on the map, that are detention parcels that the city acquired over time, the two on Feast Drive, when the property was originally developed in the 70s, and then the piece on Bradford Circle, which is also fronts along North Avenue, that was part of that development's detention area. So these are kind of a housekeeping set of ordinance changes for the zoning map to bring those properties from the R1H Single Family Residential District to the Parks and Open Space District designation. Plan Commission was okay with that change. They did inquire about the, or one of the members of the public did ask what the benefits were, they were an adjoining owner, and we did point out that basically it would put the properties in a use category that fits their present uses, and then also it is a district that has greater restrictions on what could go on the property if, for some reason, was ever to be developed. So the Plan Commission did recommend approval, and this ordinance tonight, before you, based on that recommendation, would make that change.
And questions for Drew? As he stated, it's more or less a housekeeping thing, something we've been working on for the last couple of years, so no questions?
Do we know if that citizen was satisfied with the answer?
Yes, they were satisfied with the hearing.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion to recommend to city council ordinance 18-70?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Wolf, first by Wolf, second by Meitzler, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, we'll put that on consent agenda.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Item seven, ordinance 18-71, amending the zoning code text for the uses in the CC district. Joel?
Yes, thank you very much. In September, the city council rezoned some properties on Main Street in the West Town neighborhood during the council's review of that to the Community Commercial District. During the council's review of that rezoning, it was noted that there were some people that live in the neighborhood that were concerned about the potential of pawn shops coming into the neighborhood. There was also a little bit of concern regarding tattoo parlors. As a result of that, the council directed staff to have the Plan Commission hold a public hearing to review potential text amendments to allowed uses in the Community Commercial District. The Plan Commission held a hearing on October 17th, and at that hearing, they concluded to recommend that the zoning ordinance be amended to change pawn shops from where they are currently allowed in a Community Commercial District as a permitted use. Pawn shops are currently allowed as a permitted use. The Plan Commission recommended to remove them as an allowed use in the Community Commercial District, and regarding tattoo parlors, the Plan Commission recommended that they be changed from their current being, currently being allowed as a permitted use to being allowed with the city council approval of a conditional use permit. So the Plan Commission recommended those changes, and those are the changes that are in ordinance 18-71 that is in front of you this evening.
Thank you. Questions for Joel?
What we wanted.
What's that, Alan?
I think that's what we wanted.
You wanted it to go back to Plan Commission and have them review that?
Have them go through that and then bring it back.
Yep. No other questions?
And I just think that accurately reflects what I know Alan and I were hearing from neighbors all around there, and this is a good way to resolve it.
With that being said, I'll entertain a motion for ordinance 18-71.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Wolf, second by Callahan, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, consent agenda also?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Joel. Item eight, ordinance 18-73, terminating special service area number 57 for Potavia Main Street. Scott?
Just real quick, do we pass over number five?
It got taken off the agenda, she's not here tonight.
I'm sorry.
Let's see, this is the special service area number 57 rescinding it at ordinance 18-73. This is a ordinance that would rescind this special service area because it has been replaced by the new special service area. This special service area had a five-year lifetime to it for levying the tax, that tax has since expired, so now we can actually vote to rescind the specialist service area so it can be taken off the tax bills and off the, you know, the district listing that the county maintains.
Okay. Any questions for Scott? Okay. Entertaining a motion for ordinance 18-67.
So moved.
I'm sorry, 18-73, sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Saron, second by McFadden, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, consent agenda also? That can go on consent, right? We don't need any type of, okay. Item nine, ordinance 18-67, annexing 503 McKinley Street. Scott?
This is one of the last of the utility agreement properties that we have that we were able to get the property owners to sign a petition to annex. They have a utility agreement that was from back in the 80s that obligated them to annex the property into the city limits once it was contiguous. Property is now contiguous. We had some problems because it was in an estate situation trying to get the actual owners that had control over the property to sign the petition. So we did finally get that, and so this is consistent with some of the other ones that we had to try and close off some of the donut holes. This will be probably the last one that we have that'll be in front of you before we have a future presentation regarding the remainder of the donut holes and how we want to handle those in the future. So again, this is a voluntary annexation, it would remain in the R0 district as the default zoning until such time that either the city council or the property owners requested zoning change on the property.
Questions for Scott? Would you zip and write through them?
Try to.
Okay, I would entertain a motion for ordinance 18-67.
So moved.
Second.
Motion for Callahan, second by Rusado, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's approved, that can go on consent agenda as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Item number 10, resolution 18-120-R, authorizing execution of a construction engineering service agreement for federal participation in the amount of $528,376.49, and this is for the Main Street project. Alderman Wolf?
Thank you. This is for Main Street, part of the long-term capital improvement plan for the city. We have been awarded a $2.5 million federal grant through the Kendall County Council of Mayors for the reconstruction of Main Street between Water Street and Van Norwick. Additionally, the city has a commitment of $483,000 from the state of Illinois to modernize the traffic signal at Main Street and 31. I think that's where I'll stop and turn it over to Rahat. This is another step, is probably be in constant contact about this until it breaks ground. Well, it already has broken ground movements and polls, but it's going. Rahat?
Yeah, thank you. As Alderman said, this is the continuous process of getting federal funding for a project, so we, this item and the next item are kinda same, similar item. The first one is to hire a Phase III construction engineer to use federal funding. You have to hire a Phase III construction engineer, that's almost a requirement, and we have gone through the process of go to our shortlisted consultant that the council approved beginning of this year. We invited them to submit a scope of services or proposal showing their interest. So four consultants submitted their proposals. We looked at that, all those proposals, we ranked them based on their experience and qualification, and then the highest rated qualified firm, we started talking to them about the scope of services and how much it's gonna cost. You can actually, you cannot actually talk about the cost for a federal project. What you do is you agree on a scope of services with them first, then you agree on how much, how many hours they will need to finish the project. So you go back and forth with them, it's a negotiation process. So you go back and forth, and once you set on the hours, then they actually put a dollar amount next to that hours because they allocated, like, who's the project principal gonna be, who's going to be the resident engineer based on their experience and their salary, then they tell you the dollar amount that this is what it's gonna cost you. So once you see the dollar amount, you cannot negotiate anymore. That's the federal selection process. So it's a little different than how we typically select our consultant, which is they submit their cost and qualification at the same time, and we find who is the best consultant for the lowest cost, you know? So we went through, this is the federal, they call it QBS process or quality-based selection process, so we followed that process pretty much, and with BLA, the cost came out to be $528,000, which is typical, we have a typical about 7% to 10% of the construction cost. In this case, Main Street is estimated to be about $7.4 million of construction altogether. So it is right in line of where we were expecting, so I'm here. This agreement will be signed by the mayor, it's a commitment showing to IDOT and feds that we have set aside money, and we are executing an agreement with BLA, and IDOT will be also a signee on the agreement, so it's a joint agreement among three parties showing that BLA will be working for us. One caveat, IDOT is currently looking at all the hours and dollar amount that we talked about. They also kinda give their input that in case, you know, there is something fuzzy going on between the consultant and the, you know, the city, they wanna look at it. Typically, they haven't come back to say, change it, or you don't have too many hours and all that, but they might make some changes in the contract itself.
But if they can, once that price is set, if IDOT comes back and says you need to change the price, how does that work?
So they will look at it, and they will probably say that you don't have enough hours. Let's say we assume that a resident engineer will be there for 40 hours a week, they might say, you don't need 40 hours, or you might need 60 hours a week, something like that. So it will change the hour, which will subsequently change the price.
Gotcha.
But if there is a price change, we'll come back to the committee again for an approval process.
Anybody else have any questions?
The only question I have, Alan, it, BLA, who is that? What's that stand for?
So they used to be called Bollinger Lack and Associates.
Okay.
They shortened their name. They used to call them BLA all the time, so finally they said, let's just change the name to BLA, so.
When we gave the approval on your shortlist, were they listed as BLA, or, I don't remember them?
I believe it said BLA.
Were they?
They changed the name, I believe, a couple of years ago.
That's all.
Okay. Somebody here to make a motion to recommend resolution 18-120-R, authorizing execution of the construction engineering services agreement for federal participation in the amount of $528,376.49 for the Main Street reconstruction, Phase III construction engineering services with BLA Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Want to talk about that one?
I think we should. I think every step in the way on Main Street we need to talk about so people know what's going on.
I agree. Okay, resolution 18-121-R, authorizing execution of local public agency agreement for federal participation with Illinois Department of Transportation for Main Street reconstruction. Alderman Wolf?
This is another continuation in that saga of Main Street. Do you have anything to add, Rahat, on that?
No, I just wanna point out to you, if you flip to Exhibit 1, there is a page which says only Exhibit 1. The next page, it kinda gives you the breakdown of the cost. It's an agreement between the city and the state, so ASTU is what's the federal participation is going to be, which is 2.5 million. State is 433,000, and LPA is the local agency, and you can see there are some items that are participating item, in a sense, the state participate. There are some items that are not participating, and obviously below that you can see the construction engineering, and it shows the breakdown, 50,000 coming from state, and 478,000 is local agency or City of Potavia's money. So that kinda gives you the breakdown of how the money is gonna flow, and this is an agreement between the city and the state, and state will pay for the construction upfront, and as they pay their bills to the contractor, they will send an invoice to us, so we'll be writing a check back to them for our portion of the cost. So just wanted to point it out that, what the agreement, how the breakdown of the dollar is.
And the other thing I wanted to make point of here is there's also the, IDOT should be able to get this back and be ready so that way we can get this out to bid, so it will occur during 2019.
Thank you for reminding that. So we were shooting for 2019 January letting, so bid out in January. Unfortunately, we have experienced some delay with Chase Bank property. We are looking into getting some construction easement from them, it's a temporary easement, no permanent take. Chase Bank being out of, you know, that property right now, they are, for lack of a better term, dragging their feet a little bit. So their response to our negotiator, who is negotiating the easement, saying that they don't have enough people in their legal department, so we are now actually targeting the March letting, which is still gonna be able to allow us to finish the construction in one season, so by end of November. But if it drags on too much, then we are potentially going into two construction seasons. So we're trying not to do that, but I just wanted to point out that that is the delay right now, otherwise it's pretty much ready to go.
What is that kind of, where's that threshold of date at which you need to have that?
I believe it's, for March letting, it's by January 21st, you have to have all that done. So we have a little bit of time, but again, it's a temporary easement, we are not taking anything, you know, between you and me, and if it was a city project, we would not even ask for that, but because it's a federal process, we have to go through that.
Dan?
If it drags on too long, the market manager for Illinois was at my wedding, so please let me know.
Okay, that's great to know.
Email him tomorrow.
Yeah, well.
That too. Yeah, that too. Okay, any other questions?
Is there anything else that would be holding it up at this point in time?
I'm sorry?
Is there anything else that would be delaying it at this point in time?
No, it's pretty much the property owners, we, I'm gonna be preparing the checks, you know, as soon as all of them are, sign off their documents, we'll just mail them the check, and it's pretty much ready to go.
Because there were some properties that were gonna be, some residential properties that you had talked about at one time, that we may need some temporary easements on their properties, right?
Yes.
Those are all clear now?
They're almost all clear, except one or two.
Good.
Okay. Somebody care to make a motion on resolution 121-R, 18-121-R, authorizing execution of local agency agreement for federal participation in the Main Street reconstruction project? So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Callahan, second by Salvati. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, we'll leave that on the regular agenda also. All right, next item is resolution 18-122-R, authorizing the purchase of a Ford F-150 pickup truck for Community Development Department for a mountain attic seed, $25,355. Alderman Wolf?
Okay. This is a truck for community development. Is this gonna be an additional truck?
Yes, it is.
Correct? Okay.
Yes, this will be for the new inspector code enforcement position that we are hiring, in the process of hiring, and so this is in the budget for $22,000, with the cost of materials and bids and things like that, it actually was a little higher than that, so with our options, the total cost is $25,355. We are looking to move some money that we did not spend in the part-time budget, part-time position budget, we have $5,000 in that budget right now that we did not use, we would look to do that, use some of that funding to pay for that extra cost of that. There is some lighting costs for safety lighting, it's another $1,400 that we would be looking to shift from there, but for the actual purchase cost, the vehicle would be $25,355.
And does this one pretty much just match the one that you have now?
It's similar. It's not exactly, but it's a similar vehicle, it's what the state bid was for, so.
Any questions? Anybody care to make a motion on resolution 18-122-R, or 18-122, authorizing purchase of one community development vehicle for $25,355? So moved.
Second.
Motion by Callahan, second by Uer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Consent.
Yeah, consent.
Item 13, resolution 18-123-R, appointment of Rahat Bari for alternate board member to NIPA. Alderman Chancet, you're gonna take these tonight?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is to appoint Rahat as an alternate board member to NIPA. Since he was promoted to the position of city engineer and engineering manager, he's been attending the meetings anyways, and with Bob's work schedule and his workload increasing, it kinda makes sense to do a transition now. So I guess I would say, is this, is this a promotion, or are we punishing him? It's a good question. I thought he was doing well. I didn't, okay. Just again, it kinda has the memo said, Bob has been very busy working on his large projects, and really for the last several months now, we've been making this transition. This isn't anything that the three of us haven't all known is transitioning towards, so this just officially would make Rahat our alternate member with myself as the primary member. Anyone else has any questions? Otherwise, I would make a motion to approve resolution 18-123-R, appointing Rahat as the alternate board member to NIPA.
Second.
Motion and second, any other discussion? Just one thing. I do intend, I was asked to bring an update of NIPA, and I do intend to do that here in a short order. NIPA actually has been doing very well, so I mean, we talk tongue-in-cheek, but NIPA and Prairie State have both been doing very well, so we will bring that news to the public here very, very soon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it, so consent?
Consent? Sure. All right, item 14, discussion of the IEP-A low-interest loan application for Area 3. Alderman Chancet?
So the next three are all related, I'm gonna turn this over to Gary, this is regarding an IEP-A low-interest loan for Ward 1. Thank you. I actually touched on this topic, literally it's just a bullet point in my mid-year report, so probably spent all of about 15 seconds talking about it that night, but now that we're actually taking formal action that requires counsel, we wanted to bring a more detailed discussion to you. Basically, obviously, you're all aware that there was work done this year in the Ward 1 area and the Area 3, sub-storm sewer separation area. In Area 3, there's a couple components that actually qualify for low-interest loans, separating the sewers, getting sanitary and the storm sewer separated, and in Area 3, we also have lead water services. So the individual services going to the homes are lead, because they're historic, older parts of town, so you can get low-interest loans for water main work associated with lead water services. You don't have lead services in Ward 1, and you don't have combined sewers in Ward 1. By pursuing these low-interest loans, we can basically do more projects in a shorter period of time. We can use more of the bond funds, we have general obligation bonds, use more of those funds over in Ward 1, where we don't qualify for any other type of funding, and then use alternate funding sources in the form of these low-interest loans to fund some of the separation and water main work in Area 3. By doing that, again, timeline-wise, we're able to accomplish both of the large projects in a much quicker timeline, so that's a positive, we can do both projects in a quicker timeline. Negative is that in the long run, we now will have to pay back the bonds, and we'll have to pay back the low-interest loans, so that, in the long run, will leave us with very little dollars to do large projects going forward. So the alternate would be, don't pursue these loans, and if we don't pursue these loans, then we could use all the bond funds basically just to separate the sanitary sewers, because council had determined that was the priority, and then Area 1 or Ward 1, sorry, would be basically left until such time that other funding would be saved up to pay for it, because we're continuing to make a transfer into the drainage fund, we would just have to wait several years for that transfer to get up to a large enough value to be able to pay for some of the work in Ward 1. So that's a more measured approach, it would take a longer period of time to do that, and, but that's another option. But that's why staff is recommending and has gone down this road of the low-interest loans, because we can knock out two top priority projects that council identified, and then over time still be able to pay those off, so. Anyone has questions?
Oh, I said one question, the way the memo reads, it kinda begs the question, we do need to have a discussion about funding for future projects, because we're tapped out.
That's one of our strategic initiatives that council's identified, both long-term funding for storm sewer, long-term funding for streets, long-term funding for infrastructure in general.
I won't, I won't ask the Mike O'Brien question, but, right, so, but I know you're talking about possibly putting off Ward 1, that project, would that be immediate? Would that be after Phase 2, or?
That would be immediate. That would mean the work we did this past summer would be the only phase we could afford to do right now, and then we would have to put all those funds towards Area 3, and then again, as the transfers go into the drainage fund, once we got enough money in there, then we could go on to the next phase of Ward 1, and that phase would sit for a few years, and then we'd have to wait a few more years for more money to build up, and then go on. It's a cash flow issue.
I hear you. Dan? I say we go ahead with it. We've identified a couple areas in our town that have got flooding issues. We've identified them as a priority. I've seen this happen before, where we say, well, we just don't have the money now, so let's push it off, and we'll save up for it, something else will come up, and then the next thing you know, we'll have another five-inch rainfall in a half-hour period, and we'll have people with sewage in their basement, or flooding in their houses, what have you. We've identified the areas, we know how we can do it, by applying for these low-interest loans, we just need to get it done.
And it won't get any cheaper to do later on.
No, right.
And other areas of town won't have the opportunity to get low-interest loans, because you need these certain criteria in order to get the low-interest loans. You touched on the lead briefly, we have, we don't have a lead problem, really, not yet, that we've identified. Okay, so that's... Okay, so it's, so that's, we'll talk 30 seconds on that topic. The city of Batavia has no lead in our water. The only way lead gets into people's waters is through the lead services in their homes, so if you're prior, 1987 or, or, or earlier, there's a potential for a lead source in your services. The old lead service lines, we completely, will get completely replaced up to the homes. 1987, they outlawed lead and solder altogether, so there, so there could be, also called modern homes, new homes with a copper service, but the solder in your home could still have lead in it, because, because lead was not allowed from solder until 1987. So the real recommendation is, there's, there's this very simple solution, and that is if people are concerned, genuinely concerned, they can put filtration on there, and there's actually very, very simple and easy filters they could put on their faucets, and even easier solution is to turn on your faucet and let it run for 30 seconds before you take, you know, a drink out of it. People do also need to be concerned about cheap plumbing fixtures, if you, if you use the name brand fixtures, in all likelihood, you're, you're just fine, but if you go and buy a 999 fixture from, you know, the, 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 the cheap store, you very well could come from a, a country where it has lead in it still, and, and so you may be having a lead tainted fixture itself. The biggest thing is if, 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 in the morning, before you brush your teeth and you wanna take that big glass of water, just let your faucet run for 30 seconds, just to get that water out of there, and you'd be fine. So, but no, the state is mandating, starting to mandate now, the legislation hasn't been finalized, but when we touch lead services, that's coming, coming down the pipeline real quick to be. Yeah, I remember talking about that down in Springfield last time, that there's not a lot of opportunity to force somebody to do service in their home, so we'll deal with that later. Any other questions? Yeah?
The only other comment, yeah, I agree, we need to move forward on this, because I always get afraid of low interest loans and other things from other, other governments that might not be sustaining these things long-term, I mean, these are the kind of things that people are gonna start cutting, because the state can't afford this kind of stuff, so get in now before that stuff goes away.
Well, if this is the path we want to take, we have two different ordinances, one is to authorize the promissory note, and then the other is to authorize Peggy to sign the documents, so if someone wants to make the first motion?
So moved.
Second?
That's for ordinance 18 dash 65.
Right, so this is authorizing the promissory note. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. And then I'll make a motion for 18 65, authorizing Peggy to sign the loan documents.
Second.
That is the correct number?
It's 110.
It's 110, what did I say?
The resolution.
18 11 0 dash R would be the right one.
Any other discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Do we want to consent?
Well, in the city council, you wanna talk about it a little bit? I think, I think we probably should.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm just gonna add on the ordinance itself, this will go with the application to the IEP A, and then once they approve the application, there will be another ordinance at that time, so you'll see a repeat of the ordinance.
And the mayor signs that one?
Pardon me?
The mayor signs the second one?
He'll sign the ordinance itself and the loan, official loan documents, yes, the mayor, clerk, and treasurer will sign those.
Thank you.
The authorization for myself is only to sign for the construction drawdowns and other certificates and things that are standard for all IEP A loans. And one thing I wanna add for the loans, we may not get funding for 2019. We're hopeful, but it's a possibility that we may not, but for sure, this would get us in for 2020.
Okay. Next item is item 17, which is the continued discussion on the 2019 budget. Laura, you just gonna start us off with that one again?
Sure. One of the primary results from our discussion last Tuesday was that the additional police officer should be put into that budget and for us to make a proposal as to how we would be able to pay for the additional items that were included in this year's budget. The, we would suggest that city council reconsider the additional one cent of gasoline tax in order to provide sufficient funds to address those alternate general fund needs. In addition to that, I think it would be important for us to make the case for the additional staff members that have been requested as part of this budget, because I want to tell you that no member of our staff would propose adding personnel to their budget if it wasn't something that they saw as essential to maintaining the level of services that our residents expect. And I would like city council to consider the position for the information services technician. It's a very small department within our organization, it's three individuals, but one is dedicated to our GIS system and alone, whereas Howard and Todd are two people who are trying to support this entire organization's information systems infrastructure. And year after year, it becomes harder and harder for those two individuals, not only to be our help desk, but to also keep up with the technology demands, not only internally of being able to provide our departments with the tools that they need to do their jobs efficiently, but also external to our organization and the level of service that our residents expect to see from us on a technology basis. Howard is struggling with a department that's falling further and further behind due to the lack of these resources, and we have, over the course of the last several years, taken a look at whether a contractor would be able to fulfill some of those needs, and for the reasons that Howard outlined in the last meeting, we just really find that to be an insufficient way of addressing the problem. And we looked at, is it possible to have a part-time person, would that be a contribution? And the problems there are the level of individual that we would be able to hire on a part-time basis, and also that typically employees who are working in a part-time basis are also out there looking for full-time positions, and so we might invest a great deal of time getting this individual up to speed, only to lose them when they were offered full-time employment elsewhere, we've seen that in other departments where we use part-time personnel. So I would like council to strongly consider adding the information system technician position as well, however, if that were to be done, it would require an increase in the levy amount. There were three other positions that were recommended by staff, and these were budget analyst for the finance department, I think the, the argument can easily be made that to allow someone to take a look at our overall financial structures, allow Peggy the opportunity to do less of the number crunching and more of the number analyzing would be of a great benefit to us and, and help us to, already you do a great job with managing the city's finances, but really to allow the ability for more future planning on her part as well. And then two other positions are in the streets department, a crew leader and a maintenance worker. City council, when we were doing our strategic planning discussions, one of the things that several aldermen mentioned was that as we move forward and we make investments in things in our community, we should also make sure that we're properly funding, being able to take care of those things that we have made an investment in. And I know that our streets department struggles with this, they, from the cutbacks that occurred back in 2010, the, their numbers have not been fully restored from that. Scott Hans made a proposal to add a crew leader and maintenance worker who primarily would take the place of contractors that we have hired to do forestry and tree service, and that he would be able to cut $100,000 out of the forestry and tree service budget, we would still need to contract for some of that, because there's still more than those two individuals would be able to accomplish, but it would then allow the ability for, in times where other services were needed, to add those individuals to our, our core workforce in order to provide needed services. And so I would ask that city council, as they take a look at preparing the final budget for 2019, that they would consider those four positions.
Okay, let's open it up for discussion. I guess first, before we get into those considerations, you know, has anybody, has everybody had an opportunity to read through the budget, it's been kind of a tight time schedule on it, and does anybody have any questions that they'd like to ask at this point regarding the budget that they've seen? Scott?
Not so much that, any questions, but comment, well, I, I mean, it's a great budget, I mean, well laid out, it's informative, you walk through it, it's awesome, I mean, it's, I think you really let people understand what we do, which is great. I love the fact that we have the strategic plan in front of us, and we have it broken down into action items, and accountability, and costs if we have them, and tying that into the budget, that's what we want. And so, you know, my, my challenge to us is that, you know, regardless of where we end up, budget-wise, that we keep each other accountable and revisit this, so we can, we can measure our performance as we go forward.
Anyone else? Mark?
Um, I guess the increase in staff, I guess we should all kinda see that coming, because it's, we cut a lot of staff a long time ago, and, and the one that I can speak to that amazes me is the information systems one, I mean, how two people manage this is unbelievable to me. I would add onto that, that, you know, we start to see some things get outsourced, like exchange, the email getting put out to Microsoft, and some people are like, oh, you should save money, I've been down that road before, you save money on the cost of the software and everything, but those guys are still gonna get a ton of questions, I mean, how many emails we've seen already, oh, by the way, don't forget about this, and do this, and do that, it doesn't go away, so anybody thinking that just because it's, Microsoft is hosting that email, that our costs are gonna, our operational costs are gonna go down for maintaining it, so I agree with that, I under, I understand that, I think it's just a little bit of a surprise to me, I know, because they weren't there, and then they weren't there a week ago, and now here they are, like, hey, we want these four positions, so that's the only thing that I'm having a tough time swallowing, and I guess, how much of a levy are you looking at to cover all this?
It would be approximately 100,000 with benefits per position, more or less.
So we're saying the 1% for the fuel tax takes care of the police officer?
Takes care of the police officer, plus that takes the surplus, the operating surplus up about 50,000.
Okay. And then forestry takes care of one position, so it's not, we wouldn't be doing 100,000 for each position, correct? We, we have other ways to, to move that money around, so it's not gonna be 500,000 that we need to levy, it's less, 300,000 maybe?
It would be about 200,000.
200, okay.
Let me comment, I, as I mentioned the other day, when we were here, you have questions as you go through it, but as you go through it, you find most the answers, and again, your budget's always superior. Yeah, it's, it's as minor as it is, about the only thing that I could see that I would like to see scratched out of here, and it's very, very minor, but in the very beginning, under the strategic planning, under objectives, action number one is the community survey to verify support for the second bridge and associated cost, there's 5,000 dollars in there, and I, I just don't see where we need to, in my opinion, do a community survey and spend money to see whether or not we need a second bridge. I think we've all agreed that a second bridge would be beneficial, and I, you're gonna put 5,000 dollars aside for anything to do with the second bridge, put it into the savings account to build the second bridge.
And imagine the staff time associated with creating the survey, collecting the data, and providing a report of said data, so you're also saving a lot of staff time in the event that you wanna eliminate that, and that's just as important as the money.
Right, right. So I mean, I, I just, myself, I can't see spending any time or money on deciding, do we need a second bridge?
Are you afraid they would tell us to put it in a different location?
I'm sorry?
Are you afraid they would tell us to put it in a different location?
No, I don't, it, it's been, a prior city council established where the second bridge should be cited if we were to build one, and a future city council can decide whether or not they wanna change that location, I just, I, I just can't see spending any money or time deciding, should we have a second bridge? But back to the levy and, and the personnel, I, I guess I would be supportive of, of staff's request, having been here as long as I have been and knowing how many people were down, and even with these positions being filled, we're still not up to where we were, and we've still got more streets, and we've got more trees and more leaves to clean and everything else than we did back in 2010, and the public demands more services now than they did back in 2010, and we have less personnel. I always hear, you know, not always hear, but I quite often hear, when it comes to the street department, because they're the most visible, why do we have three people out there planting grass seed, and why does the supervisor show up in a brand-new pickup truck, why isn't he driving a Prius? Well, Prius doesn't plow snow, and, you know, so you have to man yourself up and gear yourself up for the conditions that you need, when, when you need it. So, you know, sometimes you can rationale those things out, sometimes you can't, but I think I'd be supportive of, of the request for this additional personnel, even if it means a levy, increase in the levy. So why don't we go around the room maybe? Mike, you wanna start? Have any comments on this?
Sure. Well, since I've been alderman, it's three and a half years now, I think we've added staff since I've, we added an HR person.
Pull the mic up towards you, Mike.
We, we've added HR, which we didn't have when we had here, we added assistant manager, a communication person, a fire marshall, I think we made John part-time building, we got a community development person we approved for last year, and a police officer. I think our revenues have not caught up to the additional people that we're adding. I would have a hard time adding additional people at this time.
Okay. Lucy?
I guess I am concerned about infrastructure costs that we've known about, that are ahead of us for a while, and I'm wondering if you can explain, and maybe we've discussed it, but I don't remember it, why we don't have some sort of reserve account to kinda help us get ready for the, since we know the expenses are there ahead of us, why don't we have a kind of, just set something?
Because we're spending all available resources that we have now, and there was not extra to set aside.
But how are we gonna get caught up if we don't somehow, I mean, there are, there are ways to raise funds, I mean, we can increase the levy, we can increase sales tax, I mean, there are different ways of doing it, and I'm wondering if we need to be considering that more seriously.
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
That is actually one of our strategic action plan items to do that.
And I, you know, I kinda know that, but I feel like we've talked about, we've known about this for, for years, and I'm afraid if we don't consider, I mean, for sure will we do it next year, or are we gonna wait another year to discuss it? I feel like we keep just waiting.
And that was the purpose of putting it into the strategic action plan, it never has been part of the strategic action plan to ident- It never has been part of the strategic action plan to identify how you're going to fund those things in the future. And to Alderman Salvati's point, accountability is built into the strategic action plan where we're going to have to answer for not accomplishing the things that we committed to do in the strategic action plan, because they aren't nebulous. You know, we tried to make them specific things that needed to be accomplished, and that certainly.
And I love the strategic plan. I'm absolutely thrilled by it. But I'm not sure why we can't consider doing that now, why we need to wait, and whether it's wise to wait.
Let me address, okay. First of all, the streets, we have been funding quite well, but we knew that we were coming to the end of the I.DOT grant, and that we were going to have to re-implement funding from the general fund to the street fund, because we had set aside the money for the grant, so that we would have it, it's a pass-through grant through I.DOT. And we had set the money aside, and so we've had that money to spend for the grant. It's kind of complicated how it works, but we, we do the projects in the street fund, and then I.DOT reimburses us, and then we pay the money that we had set aside to our largest electric customer. But we knew that grant was coming to an end, so we have been mentioning it for the last couple of years, that we would need to re-implement funding from the general fund towards streets. And this budget does take that into account, and is funding streets sufficiently for next year. It just is saying, we may need to add a little more over the next few years.
Okay.
And then for stormwater, there was a couple of years there where there was discussion, how are we going to pay for that? And there was maybe two years that there was studying of the stormwater utility. But then in the summer of 2017, it was decided that we would use property tax, and that's the route that we went. And we have a pretty good plan in place for that as well. And with the recommendation to borrow for the separation, that will help actually, we won't be able to do large-scale projects for a few years, but we've got a good plan in place for funding it long-term.
So you're comfortable?
I'm comfortable. It may need, I mean, engineering will never be comfortable enough, because there's, there's always plenty of projects to do, but I think we have a solid plan in place for funding that right now. If we, you know, just adding maybe 50,000 or 100,000 per year will help that as well. But currently, we're funding it at 700,000 a year for drainage.
And you anticipate that amount will increase? How much, I mean, you talked about having to increase it.
I was talking about having to increase for streets.
For streets, okay.
And right now, with this budget, we've moved the entire gas tax to the street fund, and then supplementing it with either 500,000 was the original budget document, but then it was amended to 350, which is what we transferred this year with a one-cent increase to the gas tax.
Okay, thank you.
Dan?
I would just make some general comments. I appreciate the way the budget was presented, and I also appreciate previous year's discussions that we've had. I can't remember if it was you that said it or someone else, but you can tell a lot about a person, you can tell a lot about a city by looking at their budget. You can understand what their priorities are. If you look at my wallet right now, you recognize that I buy too much coffee and eat too much fast food. If you look at our budget, we are extremely lean. And I kind of, I kind of have to say that I disagree with, that revenues aren't going up in general. Well, I mean, yeah, taxes and whatnot, we've made some increases too, but we've also been sort of afraid to tackle some long-term issues, because we have not been willing to increase our levy. We constantly talk about how we have one of the lowest tax rates in the region, and yes, that's attractive and whatnot, but I've said this before, we do get what we pay for. So in the long-term, if we're going to fund things like a bridge, replace sidewalks on a regular schedule, what is it, sewers need to be done over, what is it, a 60-year cycle? Something like that? Or we're going to get further and further behind? We do sort of, as a process, kind of kick the can down the road. So I appreciate that tonight is not the night to have that discussion. We do need to have that discussion in a future Cow meeting, because we are missing some opportunities to create some long-term funding mechanisms. I would also bring up the gas tax. I mentioned this a couple of meetings ago. There was a spread of around 15 cents between Geneva, St. Charles, and Batavia one particular night, and I couldn't tell which community had the higher gas tax. I had asked for that additional one cent last year. I do think that we're making a mistake, and we don't increase by that one cent again this year. And I do agree with your remarks about maintaining a level of service. I, in my conversations with my neighbors regarding home rule and whatnot, I got a general sense that people do find value, the people that were in favor of it, find value in the things that we do. And I guess I don't think we should be afraid of tackling these, these issues. They give us a vote of, they give us a vote of confidence with this last election. My comments.
Yellen?
Dan kind of stole what I wanted to talk about, was the fact that, you know, for years, we've tried to be as frugal and be as conservative as we could, and keep the tax rate down, and not build up the reserves, and not raise continually a year after year after year. And I think that that's, to Lucy's point, that's kind of where we put ourselves in this position, where we are behind, we don't have the reserves to do that. We don't have two funds set up for, you know, reserves for stormwater, reserves for streets. We don't have that stuff set up, because we haven't done that. I guess the one thing that I would like to know is, if we raise it 200,000 in our rate, where does that put us in the percentage, you know, compared to the CPI, or 5%, or what percentage does that put us at when we, when we do that?
The CPI would provide about 165,000.
Okay, so very minimal change or above what the CPI would be at. So I guess, I really feel like, from a standpoint of how we support our staff that we have here, and the fact that I look at, and nothing against our staff, but in certain years coming up pretty quick, we're going to have a lot of staff changes. We've got a lot of people that have been here for a long time, and we can't just think about the people that are here today and what they accomplish, but what their job is, and what it's going to take to replace them to do their job. A long time ago, on another board that I'm on, there was the joke about a certain person that is not, won't be here the next time, we have to make a decision on the budget. And it always made you stop and think, okay, it's not truly about the people that are there today, or what they're doing, but what we would have to spend to replace them, or what jobs we would get done by replacing just that person. You know, going through all the stuff we did with home rule, it was very interesting to see, as we started to compare different things in different positions within our city and other cities, that, you know, what we pay for something, another city doesn't pay the same thing, but they also have an assistant to that person, or they have three people in that department, where we have two. So, you know, I think we have to think about those things, and staffing, to me, there's a lot of associated costs with it. It's not just, you know, we pay somebody $75,000 a year to work in the street department. It's all the benefits, it's the healthcare, it's everything that goes along with that. Pensions are on top of that. So you have to think about the cumulative effect of that. That being said, I think, you know, we owe it to the city, and we owe it to the staff that we have to be able to make their jobs do. And I really feel like sometimes we have a lot of staff that go way above and beyond what they get paid for, or what their job description is. And moving forward, when you try to replace somebody like that, you're not going to have that same commitment, or that same, you know, drive towards doing that job. So I think we have to look at that, and that's why I don't have a real problem with adding the staff that's been requested. Some part of me wants to say, okay, we'll add half of it this year and half of it next year, and take our baby steps back into this. But then again, I don't want to do that. I want things to be as good as they can for the city, and I think we've made really good decisions. And yes, another, another night, we will have to have discussions on some of the other things, because the bridge account just has to be done. And, you know, we don't have to worry about where it's going to be built yet. We have to worry about, are we halfway there to having enough money to build it? Then we could start the discussions on where it can actually be cited and built. So, I'm done.
Thanks, Yellen. Scott?
One of the questions that I have is more of a philosophical, as we, as we move forward and look at, you know, look down the road, which, one of the things that Peggy does, I think phenomenally, is predict, look down the road at what's coming. And part of what's coming is a gap between 2021 and 2022. And that is, you know, where we drop our reserves from 111 days to 79 days. And so as we look at this, and we talk about, you know, adding employees, whatever, and increasing our levy, you know, what I don't want to do, for whatever reason, is that at one particular year, jack the levy, you know, as high as possible, because we're in trouble. And so, you know, as stewards of those dollars, it's incumbent upon us to look and plan and react to what may be coming. And so that's something to consider as we're, as we're looking at this. Not that I want to raise taxes, I don't want to raise taxes. But the reality is, is we have aging infrastructure, you know, and I, someone asked me, I was out walking a couple of days ago, talking to people, and they asked me about that. I said, it's like buying a house. It's like buying a house. At some point, 20 years, you have to replace your air conditioner, your water, water heater, your furnace, because it ages. And that's where, we have, we have an older house, you know, for a community. We have to replace stuff in order for it to be functional. You don't want to wait for catastrophic failure to have to replace it, because then it's a lot more expensive. So the preventative maintenance, all that rolls into what's coming. And so, and that's why I'm opening up to the council to discuss, what do we need to do as far as levies going forward? You know, I mean, I don't want to raise taxes, but the fact of the matter is, is you don't want to get to a year where you're, you know, you're hammered.
You bring up a good point, and that's why I include the five-year projection in there. Our operating costs are going to go up every year, just by existing, because you're going to have increases to the pensions, you're going to have increases to health insurance costs, and you're going to have just regular wage increases. So there will need to be increases to revenues to keep up. So that is something to definitely keep in mind. Our sales tax dollars may not grow at the same rate that we need them to. So it is something to keep in mind. If you're, if you do augment the staff, that does also augment the amount that your operations will need to increase the next year.
But we are also focusing on the revenues and putting investment into economic development, the position that's been added to community development, we hope will more than pay for itself in our ability to more quickly review plans that are provided to us as well. Anthony is going to, he already has been through one week toward a certification in economic development, and so we are hoping to add him as a resource for our economic developments. And so I don't want you to think that we just take a look at the fact that expenses are just naturally going to increase. We're making every effort to add revenue to the top of that equation as well.
And I'll address the positions that have been added, added, or it should, the better term would be returned, because those weren't, the only new position in there, the HR position was offset from an assistant city administrator. Rather than have an assistant city administrator, it was broken out to a human resources director. So that wasn't really a new, it was a change in position. And the assistant for the administrator, not assistant city administrator, but assistant two, was a replaced position from an administrative assistant that had been there. And the fire marshal is a restored position. What other position did you mention?
Crew leader and maintenance worker?
No, no, that we have brought back. That, that was the new position, was the communications coordinator.
I realize the police officers bringing it back.
Use the mic.
Is the community development also bringing back a staff to what it used to be?
There was a part-time building inspector position that was eliminated during the layoffs, but that was a part-time position. So that would be an augment to staff once that position is hired.
There it is, Scott. Marty?
So I'm thinking and taking all of this information and about it, and it's digesting, but also when you're talking about eating and digesting, that you don't eat too much, that it gives you heartburn. And what we've done in the past with the positions is, we've looked at those positions, identified the need, and really understand what the return on that investment for that position. That's why we have supported those ones, such as either creating the new position with the communications, or bringing in some of the other ones with the fire marshal. The discussion of the two positions for last year, buildings and police, we identified those last year, and we all knew what that was, and we made that value judgment on raising the levy as part of that, is what we wanted to do. The position that I do want to support are the police, because I supported that last year. We know what the need is for that, we know what the return is on that, we know the extra resources that we get is going to be much more in return for us as a community in the long run. The IT department, with the IT person, think of any company with 200, 300 employees, and what are their tech departments? Look at all of us who work in the private sector, and look at our companies and what our tech departments have. I can't believe that they do it. But with those two, those two impact every single department, because it is far-reaching into police, fire, electric, every single one it touches, and two people do that. So when you're on a, in the, how many touches do you make to actually make the value? They pay their weight in it. We also know that it is a sector in the, in the city, that technology isn't going to go away. There are going to be more and more strains upon that department than probably any other one going forward. Everything is going to be technology-based. So on that one, that is an easy, I think we all get it, we all know, and I think the community, when you are out there talking to people, they get what their tax dollars are paying for, and what the return on investment, what the return on efficiencies gained. Every single, every single business buzzword is going to go for that position. The other ones I'm still thinking about, but I don't believe that those cases for me have been met yet, or for this year, because it could be made, but maybe it's not until next year. Because it's also, what I took away from the referendum and out talking to people is, they wanted us to remain and have the flexibility and the creativity to make all of the decisions, instead of just going to property taxes, because that's where everyone wants relief from. And that was, when I was talking to people, I'm like, if we go to a non-home rule, everything goes to property taxes. And that just, that just kills people, because they're like, that's not what we want. Because had home rule gone away, all of our being able to think and plan and be creative is gone. We'd come in here, go, raise it five, done, walk out the door. And it would be just boring. Committee by pushing a button is really all it is. I think being creative for the position, for the police officer, for the, for the IT would be necessary. And that's why I would support the creativity for this year for the gas tax, because it would free up, because that is going to, when you're weighing those things out, going to another community, are you out, going to another community, are you going to see that? No. But what is the return? We can make the case, well, this is where it's going, to specific projects, to specific streets. We have a plan. And that's where I think for the last five, 10 years, we've been very good at laying out a decisive plan. I think on our comprehensive strategy and thinking, we need that same sort of plan with personnel. Instead of every year, we come and go, oh, I know we'd like more. And to Dave's point, we always know what we're up against, we know what you're up against. But we also still have to justify those positions here, today, and now. For me, you've made the case for the police officer, you've made the case for IT. I don't have any questions about those. I know the impact on that. But the other ones, I'm not sure yet. I'm not saying no, but I'm concerned for this year because I don't know with the other things that we're trying to balance with utility increases and a potential gas tax, is it also the right time for that? Or do we plan that into and make the case for why we would be doing a levy for next year? That's my thinking.
Elliot?
So, I'm split on a number of thoughts here. Pardon. First off, I absolutely agree, we need some kind of a personnel plan. I mean, we're seeing it more and more, not just in our own city staff, but you go out to the private sector. More and more people are working deeper and deeper into their years, and it's not because of necessarily income, it's because of insurance purposes, right? And insurance is only getting more expensive. All of these things, as you're speaking of, the operating cost is only going up, it's never holding steady or let alone going down. So, I do think we need some kind of a personnel plan. I do second also what Scott said. I have to hand it to you. I mean, going through the budget, I mean, it's not a juicy read, and yet it's colorful, and yet it gives you all the details. And if anybody wants to go and read about the purchase power costs or anything else, it's all in there, which is great to see. And seeing the strategic plan laid out to speak from a budget perspective of what we're trying to tackle and put the priorities in there was refreshing to see. With the personnel, probably beating a dead horse from last week's conversation, but I, to my mind, the police officer is not even in the discussion because we already approved that last year. It's done. The only thing that might be up for discussion is to lift the hold, which to me, yes, we lift the hold, it's a need, we already funded it, let's move on. There is a budget gap then, from what I'm hearing, it's the increased operations costs that we have to come up with some kind of a levy for. That's the responsible thing to do. I don't support any sort of property tax levy increase. I think we have to get creative, to the point of the home rule vote that was made earlier. Seeing a vote of confidence as it came in, to me, was not a, you're doing the right thing and feel free to keep doing whatever you think is, you know, it's, we trust you are going to be as creative as possible, use restraint, and not go hog wild and prove the other side right. So, coming up with the budget gap, I'm absolutely in support of, we have to get creative, we have to find it, whether it's a gas tax or something else. The IT technician, I can, just working in IT myself, absolutely condone, that's another position that ought to make the rest of the departments more efficient, and there is a cost savings with that. We've talked in the past about getting all the permit processes online, right? And that's saving some of the time from community development. Getting Rhonda, her access to not be scribbling things out and then transcribing it later into a computer. So, I think that one I could definitely support. We keep coming back to, though, if we're going to see where more and more people are moving into the city, which is only going to add to the cost of the infrastructure needing to be repaired year over year, then really what we need to see is our sales taxes are increasing, are increasing, excuse me. So, I think for my head where it's at is, while I understand the need for the budget analyst, the expansion of hours for the HR admin assistant, the street crew leader, the street maintenance worker, I understand all those, but I think we have to do what we can from an economic development standpoint, and maybe we need to get some more manpower in there first, even though that's not one of the items listed, so that we can long-term support these additional positions that are needed. My thought.
Mark?
I don't know if you had time. I asked a one question about the total property tax impact of all taxing bodies between us, Geneva, et cetera. Again, I don't want to raise taxes. I think unfortunately, it becomes a reality at some point. But what you see on social media is like, oh, it costs so much more to live here than it costs to live in City X. And that could be true, but I don't go and look at all the tax rolls for every single community around here. But I do think it's important to understand what those figures are, if you've been able to get those.
I did post it on the city's website. The response is just five minutes before I came down here, so you wouldn't have had time to review it. I thought you were asking for more than just the total property tax rates for those communities. I thought you were asking for all taxes, local taxes that they may have imposed, which took a little more time to find out if they had a gas tax, a natural gas tax, and a liquor tax, those kinds of things. Not all cities post the information in an easily accessible area where you can just go in and say, okay, these are all the local taxes. We do. So, if anybody else wants to know, they could easily find it on our website. But we do have all of the comparative total tax rates for the communities that are, the same communities that were listed in the budget for the local share of the city tax. And Batavia, looking at it right now, is for total tax rate is the third lowest. Geneva is lower and St. Charles is lower. Mainly St. Charles is lower because their school district rate is, in fact, they must have just had some debt drop-off because the rate went down quite a bit from the year before. St. Charles is at 839, Geneva's at 876, and we are at $9.12. But then, other communities, Auburn's at $10.70, Montgomery 950, South Algen 952, North Aurora 985, Aurora 981, and Algen at 1029. So, and then, the sales tax rates range from 7% in Auburn to eight and a half in Algen. Geneva and St. Charles are both at eight, like we are. So, we are right in the ballpark with that. Gas taxes, St. Charles is implementing one, or they did, I think, November 1st, at 2 cents a gallon, and then Aurora and Algen are at 4 cents a gallon. And then, utility taxes, nearly every community has a utility tax. Liquor tax, St. Charles raised theirs to 3%, and Aurora has a food, beverage, and liquor tax of 1.75. So, you pay it if you go to the restaurant on the total bill, including liquor, and then also packaged liquor. And Algen is at 3% for liquor tax.
No, I mean, that's helpful, and I think that's, you know, again, it's part of the total impact and getting creative, obviously. The communities around us have gotten creative. I think St. Charles and Geneva have a little bit of advantage, they have significantly more retail than we do. So, that helps them out dramatically. We are undersized from a retail standpoint compared to our population. So, things become a little bit more difficult for us, but I, you know, again, I'm, a couple of, the police position, again, I think that's a no-brainer. The IT, I understand because of the efficiencies. I struggle with the other ones with having to raise property tax. I wish there was a way, again, just tweak some other things, maybe we can make this all work. And again, spread that out. That was kind of what everybody told us. Yeah, keep spreading out the way we tax ourselves. I have no problem visiting, buying my gas in Batavia and eating in Batavia and doing all the things that help support Batavia, even though I could put it on my tax bill or I could put it on my food bill. I prefer to put it on my food bill because I know other people are coming in and doing that as well. So, if we can figure out a way to raise this without hitting our residents squarely in the face with it, that'd be my preference.
Nick?
Yeah, I have more questions than I have comments, I guess, other than getting creative is my general answer. How that is, I don't know. When you are creating in the budget the revenue, in some of the things, like, you know, we're getting a lot of activity downtown, new restaurants coming in, things like that, how do you forecast for that in here? Is it just kind of a percentage increase on some of these, or do you?
Looking at the month-to-month trends compared to year-over-year trends, looking at how the economy is doing, guessing. Just being honest.
More than most people's guesses. But I was just curious, because, I mean, I see a lot of activity, we're doing a lot of good things, a lot of building, but it's hard to quantify how that's really going to impact us in the coming years, so I wasn't sure how that's.
Our sales tax budgets, year over years, have been really very close to what we've budgeted. The one thing that's more difficult to budget for is the income tax. We get projections of what the Illinois Municipal League says. They think the state of Illinois will share in revenue, and often, it's not what they've said, and it can be higher or lower. So, we have to use our best guess on that.
All right. If, and I'm not necessarily in support of this, but you're looking at a levy of approximately $400,000 for those positions, what does that equate to on a standard?
Yeah, I don't think it would be $400,000. And I have to say that I probably will talk to Laura after this and say, even if you said yes, I would withdraw asking for the budget analyst because I can live without it. But I didn't feel comfortable bringing, you know, just the IT position without bringing the other positions that were in the budget because they all aren't needed.
Plus, it's the technique, right? You got to ask for this.
No, no, no. In fact, it was presented to you without those positions because that was our understanding that.
She wants the IT department first so she can get the new software, then she.
Well, I just wanted that to be clear.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I did have a question on the overall cost of living. You went down the path of all the tax rates, but it's hard to, and I don't even know if it's possible, but there's a cost of living to live community to community. While we can pat ourselves on the back for the low municipal tax rate, is it low cost of living here? Obviously, I hear from other people that our school tax rate is high, but we have a high electric bill compared to others. Like, what's the, is it possible, does anybody analyze cost of living in communities and take the total picture and to play? I know you did a part of it with all the taxes.
Yes and no. We do the comparison of utility rates. NIPA does comparison with ComEd and all of the municipal-owned electric utilities for the electric portion. From time to time, we'll do surveys of the water and sewer. And then, the taxes, the typical total tax rate, which I had mentioned, but you can see them online under the questions. Our total tax rate is slightly higher than St. Charles and Geneva, but certainly, it's in line with, and lower than all of the other surrounding communities. So, in that regard, the total, but then again, you have to look at, what is the assessed value and how, what are the home values? And there are a lot of variables in that. But we could probably at some point do a comparison that includes the utilities, water and sewer. Certainly, electric is more difficult because you can't really say, in communities that don't have an electric utility, are they using, you know, are they under aggregation to their community? Is those that are in the county have county aggregation for electric? And we don't know what those rates are, and it would be more difficult to do that comparison. But we certainly could compare the utility bills for the municipal-owned electrics.
All right. And then, I believe it's, you've posted it, but I haven't seen it yet, but does that include a comparative gas tax in the communities around? So, we know where.
Yes. There was only one that I couldn't get an answer to on the utility tax, so it's got a question mark. I know they have one because they have a dollar amount in there, I just didn't know what the rate was.
Plus, we don't know what their proposals are for next year as well, but.
Right. Because some, their budget year ends in April.
Then along the lines of, you know, getting creative, are any of those positions or able to be, can we get help for departments through contractors at all more? I know we talked about that before, but the pensions and the future costs are just staggering to me, and I don't know if that's something that we really take advantage of or if it's even worth it. I don't know. But I think we need to do more creative stuff. One thing that I always remember, and I don't know what this levy amount is, but one of the first couple of years I came on the board, we sat here like this and discussed maybe a $60,000, $70,000 variable, that I don't remember what it was, and we spent a lot of time discussing it. Probably July, or January 10th, the first week, you know, we come to a meeting and John Dillon had some budgeted item that came in, $60,000 under budget. I'm like, wow, we spent a lot of time, and there it is. So, I say that only because I would favor the creativity and looking where else we can make it. I'm not, I wouldn't say no necessarily to any of the positions. We know the ones that we feel strongly about, but I would see, really like to see how we can afford them without raising the levy. That's it for me.
Drew?
I think we're in a really interesting time, and probably not in a good way. You know, we've just come off this, the whole big home rule thing where there was a lot of discussion about property tax and this and that, and be creative and how you steward the money. In the, what, five and a half years or so I've been on the council, we've been really living very lean for a long time, and for a long time before I even got here, we've been living lean. There's a lot of uncertainty going on with the state. Mayor's always warning us that that money that used to be there in grants for roads and streets and things like that, that's drying up. There's not much, if any, money we can expect coming out of Springfield. You know, the LGDF is pretty much up for grabs. There's a brand-new governor, we don't know what's coming. We do know we've got what's essentially deferred maintenance all over town on infrastructure being underfunded. We've got staff that undoubtedly needs support for a lot of reasons that I've mentioned. You know, people are saying, you know, the story I used to tell people is, you know, it's, in town, you've got a couple of ways to look at things, and one of them is, pretty much, if you do nothing new, every year, it gets more and more expensive to run town. Staff costs go up, service costs go up, commodity costs go up, everything's going up. So, if you just stay static, you can either promote economic development and grow your tax base, or you can, you can look to property taxes. And I think we're, you know, we can be creative, like has been discussed, with looking at, you know, different revenue sources. Unfortunately, I think now we're at the point where we need all the creativity we can muster, we need all the economic development we can muster, and nobody wants to do it, but we need to look at increasing revenue by way of taxes. And there's, there is so much out there that we've been putting off. And there's, there is so much out there that we've been putting off for the street, sewer, this, that, staff, everything, just every year, there's always something we can, we can kick it down. And we're at the point now where, you know, the street fund's running out, we're gonna have to cover that. Who knows what's coming out of Springfield? But if they could deal us a blow, we need to start preparing to be sufficient on all these things on our own. And so, and I don't doubt we need staff, and I think, you know, I support the request. We're going through adding staff to my department, and it's, you know, are you getting everything? You know, there's an opportunity cost to it. You look at it, and you're like, are you getting things done? Yeah, we're getting things done. But sometimes it takes a really long time for them to get done. Well, what's the opportunity cost in that? How much, how much better off would you be if you had the staff and could be ahead of the game, rather than always just chasing along and barely keeping up? So, I don't know if I have a specific recommendation, but I think it's not going to be a single creative or economic development or revenue increase somewhere. It's going to take all of those things and more to get us where we need to be, because there's a lot that needs to get done. And Scott brought up that big gap that's coming up there in a couple of years. Got to get taken care of. And I think the longer we defer doing anything about it, the more painful it's going to become. That it? That's it.
So I would like to throw out some information out there. We had talked, or I had mentioned at the Thursday meeting, that I think it would be a good idea for you to come up with a policy on the tax levy, on what you'd like to see going forward, if it would be a certain dollar amount increase each year to support operations, or if it would be to try and keep it to the CPI, so that there would be no change to that, or levy a certain rate. Those are all things that you could choose to do. There is room, because the EAV is projected to have grown over this last year, that we could increase the levy up to what the rate was last year, so that there would be no increase to an individual, but we would collect more revenue. Because when you don't increase the dollar amount, if you're just basing it on last year's, you're not getting any new dollars, but, and not capitalizing on the EAV growth. So that would be an option where we could increase the amount of the levy for that growth.
By keeping the rate the same. Correct.
Right, by keeping the rate the same.
I guess I'd like to see us, if possible, if we could come to an agreement on it, you know, if we were to go above the CPI, or however we wanted to tie that, that at that point, it required a different number than just a simple majority of the 14 of us saying yes to it. Because I think then that makes it more of an agreement on what we're doing, or the direction that we're going. Because I think then that also provides more opportunities for more people to contact more of us when we're making that big of a decision. You know, and I don't know if that's just a simple three-quarters, or two-thirds, or wherever we want to draw that line, but I think that that's something, you know, I felt like after everything we went through, going through the Home Rule discussion, that that was one of the things that came back to me in feedback from people, well, you know, what does it take for you guys to raise our taxes beyond that? I said, well, it's just a simple majority. If we go to a budget meeting and we decide we want to raise the rate 5%, we can raise the rate 5%, and if, you know, eight of us vote for it, it passes. And I think that that might be something that, just as a check amongst ourselves, or for the public, I don't even want to say perception of it, but the reality of it to the public, is that if all of us are in agreement on that, or the majority of us are in agreement on that beyond just the simple majority, that, to me, means that more of us buy into the reality of what we want to do with it, or that we all understand, okay, this is what we're doing. And from the rate side of it, you know, that's something that I think is always interesting. If you go back and look at our actual tax rates, how they moved up and down, but yet the dollars have crept up or gone down with the rate changes, sometimes it just doesn't make sense, but that's the reality of what the properties, you know, evaluated at, and where we add on properties. I look at, you know, two or three years from now, we're going to have 500 new houses, or housing units. I mean, there's some value there, and again, if we're going to either keep the rate the same, or if we say, you know, CPI, or whatever number we choose, that we need to have a supermajority to pass that, I think that's a positive step forward.
Those are all, though, I think, good ideas to have conversation in the future. Nothing that we have to decide for this budget now. And I think, you know, to go back, and not to be, not to be controversial, but to agree but disagree, on, we have to be creative. I agree, we have to be creative. But we don't have to be creative just in November, when we're getting ready to pass a budget. We've got all year long that we can kick ideas around and come up with ways to generate revenue. And if anybody's got a creative way to generate revenue, other than resorting to property taxes, I'm sure everybody here would like to hear it. The only thing I can think of, Mayor has mentioned here at the last meeting, where it sounds like sometime in the very near future, it could be that marijuana becomes legalized. And if that's the case, maybe there's a creative way there, because I think we can only do it because we're Home Rule, where if there's a sales point in town, where we could just tax the heck out of it.
State attorney got that idea?
Well, couldn't we jump on that bandwagon, though, too? I don't, I don't know. But, I mean, I'm just saying, you know, I agree, it's very hard to raise property taxes. I certainly don't want mine raised either. But to just say, I don't want to raise property taxes, because I think we need to be creative, means we're sitting still.
And we've done that.
And we've done that.
For almost a decade.
We've done that. Mayor?
Yeah, let me throw a couple of things here. I wasn't in town today, I was out of town.
Mayor, pull the mic over towards you, please.
I wasn't in town today, I was out of town for most of the day. I was down at Willis Tower at the CMAP Council of Mayors, and we had the staff kind of on the line down there about what the perceptions are, what really is going to happen in Springfield. And as this conversation flushed out, one of the things that I learned is, is that, you know, Batavia's not alone, but there's, the region's really heavily divided into two communities groups. They have, the communities that have, they have tax rates and growth and increasing assessed valuation, and there's the other side, where the assessed valuations are falling, and people are moving out, and no businesses are moving in, and there's some that are really in a deep, deep problem. And, you know, it became very obvious to me, in fact, some of them were kind of pointing the finger at me, that we're regarded as one of the real shining stars of success here, because we've got all the growth, and we got EAV, and we've got businesses moving in. And, you know, I got asked, how many new houses were we talking about annexing to the city, or had we approved? And I said, well, it's over 400, and most people choked when I said that, because it's a, that's a heavy number. I guess where I'd like to go with, after I say that, I've got to go to some more meetings tomorrow, I'll be back in, I'm not going to the city tomorrow, but I got to go to Oakbrook, and then I got to go to Arlington Heights, and there'll be mayors at all those places, so I'll get my ears burned again. I guess I would like to kind of jump on the bandwagon and support what Peggy just suggested, that we allow her to put together some numbers that kind of give us a real picture here about if we put all these things that we've talked about into the budget, what is really the bottom-line actual number? And I guess there's no way for her to predict any of this right at the moment, but one of the very heavy pieces of the conversation that I was part of in Chicago today is, it appears that the new governor and the members of the General Assembly, despite what other people may say and may think, they're hell and high water going to be enhancing or putting marijuana, legalized recreational marijuana on the street. And the question is, there's still a little bit of wonderment out there, how that's all going to be taxed. It appears that if you want to buy marijuana in Illinois, you're going to pay serious tax for it. And, you know, that's going to be a state-driven tax to a large degree, but I think because we are Home Rule, we may have some option of throwing our own tax on there, and we'll probably hear, well, that really draws down the buying power of it, but, I mean, that may be one source of revenue. But if you start adding up, if some of you I know went to my program last week with the Chamber of Commerce on things that are happening in Batavia, if you put all these new houses, and, you know, right now, we've got, well, Rubicon coming back, but we've got out in the industrial park, almost 400,000 square feet of new building being built out there. There's going to be a significant increase in shift in the assessed valuation and an upward motion, because we've got a lot of interesting stuff that's coming online. So I think some of that can be hedged against the tax rate, because as far as keeping it somewhat near where it is now, because, you know, you'll get the argument from some people, well, you ought to let all that come on, and then not add any taxes to it, so it'll drop the tax rate a little bit. This may be not the moment to do that, but we, I think, are going to have the opportunity in the next couple of years to see a significant increase in Batavia's assessed valuation. And so there's just, you know, we've got an excellent staff here, led by Peggy, as far as trying to figure out the finances, and she's done a wondrous job the last few years. I'd like to give her a couple more weeks to kind of sharpen her pencil and do some number twisting to figure out, you know, we got that last edition of Tanglewood out there with $500,000 houses, slowly selling, but there's steady growth in that, so that's, that'll be another shot in the arm, as far as EAV. And so there's a lot of positive things setting up here that could be very good for Batavia. And so I guess I'm not wanting to sit here tonight and predict doom and gloom to you, because everybody in Chicago this morning was pointing to me, and Frankfurt was getting pointed at, too, because they got kind of the same thing going on down in Southern Will County, that, you know, there's some towns here that are really booming, and are really moving forward and got a lot of activity, and we happen to be one. Geneva, St. Charles are in that same mix, and there's some others that aren't doing real well. And there's, you know, the other thing that's out there is, is that there's places like Downers Grove, and Elmhurst, and Glen Allen, and Wheaton, where they're tearing down a lot of the older part of the downtown and building new four, five, six, well, in the case of Elmhurst, 12-story high-rise condo buildings in downtown, which the mayors in those towns tell me is really the secret to them holding a lid on their tax rates, because you suddenly pump in all this new assessed valuation, right in the middle of the downtown, on property that maybe previously was hardly generating much of anything, and suddenly you may be getting, you know, $700,000, $800,000 in new taxes out of some of these deals. So there's several different ways you can kind of go forth as far as explaining all that, and, you know, as I think we know, there are several opportunities in downtown Batavia over the next few years to add maybe some of that type, style of growth to the community, where you put a building in that generates, you know, $700 to $1 million in new taxes. The school district's going to jump with joy about that. I mean, that's going to be a real nice shot in the arm to some people. So, you know, this is not a doom and gloom night here. I don't think we're in a bad place. I'm glad we have the conversation going. I appreciate and respect all the comments that have been made here tonight, because there's nothing that I can't say I don't necessarily disagree with. But I think we need to come up with a common philosophy here as to what we want to do, and as Peggy's already indicated, she can maybe begin to draft a kind of a long-range strategic plan on funding, as to where we think we'll be in a couple of years, as far as new things going on, and what we can and cannot do with that additional money. You know, the other wild card that's out there is now with the state government changing, you know, what's this going to do to the local government distributing fund? And, you know, there's a lot of different aspects to what's going on here. So, I mean, the supposition is, is that places like Batavia are not going to be taking a big financial hit. We're going to be gaining some revenue, and how we handle that will be subject to review and criticism and voting by the taxpayers of Batavia in the days ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Does anybody else have any other comments, Dan, or should we just let Marty?
Just have a question for Peggy. I know that when we're talking about being creative, Dave, the point is, we're trying to figure out how to best run with public funds. It's a lot different than in the business world, where you can put out and raise your prices with no concerns, unless you start losing customers. We have captive customers that can't go away until they do, which is happening in other parts of the state. They're all moving out of the state, and they're voting, they're showing their customer base with their feet. We're different than that, because we're growing in all these other sectors. When we're talking about creativity and identifying those things where we're not trying to drive customers away, I've heard personally that a property tax could start creating a backlash as to what we're trying to do, and what we are doing. With that, the counter is, well, we're kicking the can down the road, and we're not funding everything that we need to. If we believed in that so heartedly, we would say, Peggy, how much would it cost to fund every single thing, and what would the tax increase be for that? And if you fully believed in not kicking the can down the road, if that was a 50% tax increase, would you want to do that? No, you probably wouldn't. So we're actually just playing semantics when we're saying, trying to figure out that right balance for what the city can manage and do with what it has, and what the public can afford. And they're the ones that are ultimately the ones that we have to go back to a little bit more in the balance side of the equation, going, what do you think you can afford? And what a few of us have been saying is, what we want to see is better justification of why we want things, not that we're not doing it. I think that's where we've been very, very successful in laying out, this is what we want done, this is why we want it, and this is what we're benefiting from it. This is where your tax dollars are going. This project, this project, tangible results that we can quantify. We've gotten better at that in the past several years. We didn't have that stuff before. Just the fact that we have goals tied to what we're spending, when has that ever been done? And that's huge for what we're doing, because it's also checkmarking, writing off checks. You want to see what your tax dollars, you want to see what value you'll get for spending $9.12 here? This, this, and this. Go compare that with the other cities, and they'd probably be able to be hard-pressed to justify why they were spending what they're spending. So that benefits us in the long run, because it goes back to this cohesive nature of what we've been doing, which is explaining, communicating, being more transparent, showing everything, getting more people involved. And as a result of that, we had near-presidential turnout for a question, when has that ever been done? That is awe-inspiring. That is not just, you're doing a good job. That's, we love living in this town, let's do a great job for what we're doing. And with that kind of mandate comes immense responsibility, probably even more so, because you can't just chuck it up to, nobody cares what we're doing. They do care what we're doing, and that's why it's even, I think, much more inspiring in the long run. And that's why, like, standing out after the meeting, when I was talking with Howard, they know what they want, and anytime they get to justify their position, it's a great opportunity for them to sell why they want that position. Oh, you want to see what we've thought? To Nick's point about, should we hire somebody out or not? Let's let them explain to us. Nope, we've looked at that, and here's what it would cost us, but the return is this. Those are the conversations when we're talking about being creative and thinking. That's the synergy that creates all these other things, instead of just saying, how much you got in your wallet? And give it to us. That's, that's where the real meat in getting people involved is, and that's where we're succeeding. So I think those are the things that. So I think those are the things that, it's not just saying, be creative for creative sake or trying to find out. It's for challenging each of us to think about something differently that we hadn't thought about. How are we going to do it? What do we want? And not just, I don't want to spend any money or I want to just open the checkbook and spend it all. It's somewhere in between and that's, that reflects the diversity of this community.
Okay. So Peggy, Laura, how do you want to wrap this up?
Well, there, there's some discussion that we have to have about the tax levy because the next COW meeting that I will be in attendance will be the same night as the budget hearing, the public hearing is on November 27th, and I will also have the tax levy to present to you at that time. So I need some direction in what you would like to see with next year's tax levy. And let me just say on the positions, because I felt it's important that you know all the positions that are needed. The Street Department was downsized during the recession and has not had any positions restored. And the infrastructure that's been put in for our streetscape and the roads that we're going to be seen in these new developments are going to need to be maintained and plowed and patched, just like all the other streets we have here. And those positions, if they're delayed, are going to need to be filled at some point, just so that you keep that in mind.
So you won't be here next week?
No, on the 20th, I will not be here.
Um, just from my standpoint, I know it's hard for me to give direction because we, you've already kind of presented some options that we don't really know much about, whether we keep the EAV the same or the rate and those types of things. There's, there's some information that would be helpful.
Actually, I think, did you have that, that with the EAV, the CPI, that would provide an additional 165,000?
Right. If we levied up to the amount of 2.1%, which was the CPI change, that would provide about 160,000 in additional revenues.
If we kept the rate the same, how much would it go up? Do you know that?
I didn't calculate that, but it would be probably about 50,000.
Okay, so just 50,000.
It wouldn't be, I think in the budget, I had it projected to go down maybe two cents.
Okay.
Remember how we had gone around before about giving direction for, do we want to find out what the strength is for a one-cent tax increase?
Gas tax.
Sorry, gas tax.
Yes, so that would be something that we, we'd need direction on.
We've gone around and done straw poll on those just to see if there's, so I would propose that.
All right, so who's in favor of the gas tax? Mike?
On the gas tax, I thought when we raised it last year, we, to the four cents, that was the maximum we could raise it to. That wasn't?
No, it can be five cents.
Okay.
So who's in favor of raising the gas tax? Another penny?
Can I vote twice for Mike?
All right, so we got, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, yeses and two noes. Okay, so you got your direction on that.
And then I would like to put out there if the direction is that you would rather not increase property taxes at all and you'd like to see it decrease, if the hire for IT, if you were in favor of that, and I think I've heard most of you say that you are in favor of that, delaying the hire date slightly, would, we could probably have no increase to the levy next year, but it would obviously be a full increase in 2020.
I think if we want to fund the position, we need to fund the position this year. And if we don't, then it just adds to the raise the next year.
I support that, yeah.
And honestly, I think that so much of what happens here, and we all talk about how we want to have a portal where we can send a, you know, a constituent to go through to get their work order, to get their public works, to get a street light fixed or whatever, the efficiency that that will pay off with in a year or two, just to me, is a huge thing for this organization as a whole. I mean, if you think about everything, look at every one of our squad cars, our fire trucks, the guys out for, um, the, every department that we have, they have phones, they have computers in their vehicles, everything is tied through the IT department. And I just feel like that's one we can't ignore that just has to.
So that will pay for itself, is that what you're saying?
I don't know that'll pay for itself in, in dollars, but in efficiency and the way this city operates and the way we move forward and attack issues that we have, I don't know how we can ignore that.
I agree, and I also think the same holds true for the Street Department. We knew when we started the streetscape program that we were going to have to be looking at additional help. We knew it. And as Marty said, we're, you know, kicking the can down the road. We just can't keep kicking the can down the road.
And we contract out for some services too, so.
Yeah, and that was covered by reducing the cost for forestry, right?
Right, right.
So that's where, okay, fine, it's, we get rid of one budget item and replace it with another. That makes total sense to me.
It's not equivalent, just to be transparent here, um, it's an additional crew leader and a maintenance worker, um, so, and the forestry cost was only reduced by 100,000, so it only took care of.
And I, I don't know that that was a permanent reduction for, for the forestry. No, I don't think he said it was.
Okay.
I, we have a lot of trees.
Gary says he thinks it was. Because they were supposed to be.
Wasn't permanent.
Because we hire, we hire a forestry contractor every year to come in and do tree trimming and pruning and maintenance of our parkway trees. I think the intention was to have that work transitioned to internal.
Okay. I'm pretty sure Scott said that it wouldn't be a permanent reduction in, of 100,000, that it, it can vary from year to year on the needs.
We can, we can follow up on that.
Yeah, we would need to. I just want to make sure that we, full disclosure there.
Elliot, in the opening of the, the budget here, the letter talks about the $1.2 million surplus in the general fund, um, due to the delayed spending that occurred over 2018. How much wiggle room could we find in that to account for these additional positions, if anything? I mean.
Well, we certainly have good reserves and, and we could use some of our reserves and, and draw them down for some of these operating expenses. It's just not something that's a, a, a long-term plan.
Right.
But it's certainly something that we could utilize until a formal plan for further revenues is established.
Well, that's kind of where I'm at with it, Elliot, where I'm, I mean, it's obvious that these positions are needed. Okay, we've got healthy reserves if we do the one-cent tax and if we just increase the levy just a little bit, get these positions on board, um, you know, there's things like, like Nick said, you know, that are over budget, you know, staff does the best they can, but they certainly don't want to be under budget when they project. So there's savings every year in every department, there's some savings. I, I don't know, Gary, one, one is, one of the things I had on here was, I, I forget how much exactly it is our share is with the Deer Path and Main Street intersection, but I think that, that was bid here this week and I think it came in pretty far under budget, under what was expected. So is there a cost savings there? There is. I don't know what it is, but there is.
I think it was, it was about $50,000.
And that's not the best example because that one we have grant from Kane Kendall. We also have cost sharing with the county, we also have cost sharing with the feds, that project, and we have the developer funds. So that project out of pocket cost to the city is really very minimal.
Yeah. My, my point is I think there's, there's a need for these positions. I think we need to fill these positions. It's going to take time to do it. And then we can have these discussions about how are we going to set up this long-term plan for, what are we going to do about the levy for the next 10 years out and it, it almost would be, I think, more prudent of us to, to fill these positions and then we know what our cost is, we know we're satisfying the public for what the public is requiring, and then we, it might be, it's probably backwards what I'm talking about, but then you've got a basis to work off of for this discussion for what we're going to do for the next 10 years.
It's a ramp-up and kickstart. One of the things too that we haven't really mentioned is that economic forecast in the next, starting 2019 to 2021, anywhere in there, we could see a, another dip, pretty significant recession.
Well, and I also am not sure where our sales tax is going to pan out.
Right.
For a full year of Sam's Club being closed.
Right. You can go to a fire store and go through two.
I would still recommend, even if you did say to move ahead with the positions, that we wait at least until, you know, the first quarter of 2019 before moving forward with anything.
All right, just to answer that, it's, it's coming. A recession, we just don't know exactly when that's coming, so.
Dave?
Lucy?
I, um, am concerned about paying for ongoing positions with reserves because next year, as Peggy said, everything is going to, we're going to have increases in everything. That on top of having to pay for the new positions, plus the new, other things that we're going to want to add next year. It's not going to just be increases in costs, there are going to be new programs and new positions and that sort of thing. So, um, you know, maybe there's some things we can pay for with reserves, but I wouldn't, wouldn't want to support paying for any salaried positions that we're going to be paying year after year. You know, I understand that no politician wants to raise taxes, but sometimes raising taxes could be the prudent thing in the long term. It will, you know, if we maintain our infrastructure, if we put our sidewalks in, these things are going to help support our property values. It's going to make our town better and it's all going to work together. If we keep running it down, um, slowly, we're going to, you know, the sidewalks are going to affect the appearances of properties and all that sort of thing, and we're just going to hurt our city instead of helping it. And we have momentum going right now. I would hate for us to, to have to go backwards.
So is there consent? I mean, you're not going to be here next week, Peggy, but could Laura present your findings of what it would take to fund these positions?
Well, I think we already gave you that information tonight. It would, it would cost about 200,000 in a property tax in, increase.
Marty? The lawn and leaf, I know, what's that, what are we subsidizing that out of the general fund?
Maybe 100,000.
So if we stop subsidizing that and pay the true cost for the lawn and leaf, there's 100,000 right there.
Are you creatively adding another dollar to the month?
You're still pay, you're still paying for that lawn and leaf, but if we're more transparent of this is your true cost for lawn and leaf pickup, like we've been saying, that's what it is, and here's a way that you're not putting it on the property taxes or that property taxes are subsidizing other lawn and leaf. Fully fund that because that's a service, just make that, especially since we're trying to find those positions.
The argument to that would be some people don't use that service, but yet the property taxes take care of police, fire, street, snows, everything else, so.
Absolutely. And the, the counter to going to property taxes when we're sitting on nearly 50% more of what our limit is. I mean, the, the, the fear of using reserves is kind of a little overblown in a little bit of ways because of the fact we're sitting at 158 days and not 90. So we haven't depleted our resources to, to the point where we're using the property taxes as a last resort. We're using property taxes as a first resort and we're saying the savings bank is full. We haven't been using that.
I would agree with that if there wasn't the five-year projection that showing it being depleted over the course of five years.
But that's why I'm saying not as a long-term strategy. That's why if you're creative this year withholding the line on property taxes but figuring out the other ways, that next year you, you go in with the budgeting of saying, we're looking at this, we were creative last year on doing those other things, this year is a property tax year, just like we did for funding the stormwater and the other positions. There's not been the, the fear of doing property taxes, it's making sure that property taxes are the last resort because people are saying, use that as a last resort, then, then come to us and they support that.
If we use the reserves now, will that accelerate the time when we come to the shortfall?
Mm-hmm.
So how much would that, I mean, so maybe a couple of years earlier, whatever, all right. So it's, I mean, we're just going to hit that earlier point.
Yeah.
Are these suppositions based on the fact that you threw out the budget analyst or you, or is that still in the mix?
Uh, I would rather we just hold off on that just because.
The reason I'm asking is, is it possible that that position could also pay for itself by taking the time to comb through some of the ways that we spend money to help you? In the long run, it might actually be an investment. So I, I don't, I don't think we should throw that position out so quickly.
Okay.
Does that mean one more person to go sit at the bank and negotiate for interest rates? Does that mean one more person to?
Not really, no.
Well. I'm, I'm just saying, I think there's, there is a value there and I.
Oh, I think there's definitely a value there for the, the transparency in the information that we're able to provide to the public. There would be more, more time for someone to prepare that information and get it out there. Certainly a time savings for the time I spend here beyond eight to five.
I don't, I don't think anyone asked for a position that, that wasn't truly needed. I really, I really believe that. And I, I have trouble picking and choosing which ones I would defer because every single one of these positions is truly needed. You're absolutely right. If we don't maintain these roads, we just approved all these roads, we have to maintain them. We don't have a choice.
Right. And that was the discussion that we had earlier today was, well, how can you really not, at least make the case for all of them because they all are needed positions, but certainly it's your, your values on, on what you feel we should fund.
What do we want to do? I, I sense an awful lot of quiet in here because we all feel, my sense is, we all feel like we know what we need to do, but we don't want to say it.
Okay, it's an election year, I'm willing to raise taxes because I think we have to.
I would agree.
I agree.
And I'm in jeopardy of not having my seat next year. I still think I should have a higher tax bill because we need to do these things. I'm okay with that.
So should we do a straw poll on allowing the tax levy to be increased to pay for these positions? I guess we should. Who's in favor of that?
Both of us.
So you got four, five, one, two, three, four, five, six against.
Okay, so what we'll do is, what about the one position for IT? Is that one on or off the table?
Everybody in favor of?
That would not involve a tax increase for next year.
Right.
But would impact 2020.
So is everybody in favor of supporting the position of an IT?
Yes.
All right, without raising hands, I see an awful lot of nodding heads, so yes.
Yes.
And then as far as the tax levy, because I'll prepare the ordinances over the next week and a half, and keeping the levy, the, the rate the same, which would provide a little more funding for future years or no increase whatsoever, or no increase to the dollar amount requested.
I think it should be. Keep it. Keep it. Keep it, yeah.
I could support to keep the rate.
Yeah.
Keep the rate the same, so increase by the CPI.
No, no, that would be different. So increase by the CPI would create a, a rate increase.
Right. CPI increase would increase it at what, 160,000, you said?
Mm-hmm, right. I mean, it's still very minimal dollars.
Would that, from the Two Street Worker?
Would that fund the two street worker positions, the two?
Along with the reduction in forestry if that was permanent.
If the reduction in forestry was permanent, it would.
That would fund the.
The maintaining of the rate plus the reduction of forestry would keep that the same?
On the CPI.
If we went with CPI, that would fund the position.
It would probably fund all of the positions pretty close.
Close to all of them.
But, but if we kept.
By all, you mean the three or the four?
Well, all, all four.
All four.
But if we kept the rate the same?
You only get 60.
If, if we keep the rate the same.
Then it's only about 50,000 more.
Right.
And how many times in the last nine years did we go up to CPI? Like three?
Well, overall though, the cumulative effect was about 80 some thousand over and mainly because of the last two years where we funded the infrastructure for, I mean, not mainly, that was the only reason.
Right.
Because we did have a property tax increase of 600,000 last year.
I'm just anticipating the facts of the next Home Row referendum in six years. That's all.
So what's the next question we want to ask to get a straw poll? Mike?
Yeah. I got to side with Marty on the leaf and brush. I know a lot of people don't use it and they're against it, but I, I'll tell you what, I hear a lot more positives and people think it's the best deal we have out there. And I think as we continue to move forward with the leaf and brush, that more and more people are getting on board.
Well.
I agree.
Being over the utility building department, I would have to disagree with that. We get more complaints about that than the rates.
Right. I get more people say positive things about it than complaints.
You can't back.
Oh, it, it's a wonderful service if you have leaves, but there are a lot of people that, that don't.
My whole neighborhood pays for it and we see no value from it. 160,000.
And then I was going to say, on, on the flip side, I mean, my.
I'm subsidizing your neighborhood.
Uses it left and right.
And I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Well, and that's why I think it doesn't matter if you're paying it as a fee or you're paying as a tax. You're still subsidizing it no matter what. What it puts it all on is it's all one now. And we know what it is, the full cost. You're freeing up money that should be, should be used for what it's supposed to be, which is general operations fund money. That way we can have a non-conjoined discussion about what is the value of lawn and leaf. That way it's, this is the fee, this is what it costs to run it. Do you want to keep it? And if the residents came out and said resoundingly no, then you're taking it away, but you've gained, you still have that 100,000 dollars that we're not subsidizing it every year because that it's still, you're paying your property taxes for it. It's a different discussion. It's more open and transparent.
Well, here, I have a proposition for you on that. The brush program is going out for bid next year. So we'll have new prices for that. We don't know if it's going to be higher, going to be lower. And if, once we're through this leaf season, we'll know what this last year was. We could always come back. It doesn't have to be in the budget to increase it. You, you can, you'll still need an ordinance to, to have the increase go through. So once we know what the new brush contract will cost and what this last season was and compare that to prior years, obviously for the amount of hours spent, then you can make that decision if you think that it should be raised at that time.
But we can still free up the 100,000 that we were paying out of the general fund for it, right?
Well, it, it is a general fund revenue. So it's part of the general fund now. And when, when we talk about what those funds, it also covers capital. So the cost of capital is factored in there, which is spread out over a number of years. So that is part of the equation.
Okay. So we still have a burning question over raising the CIP and leaving the tax levy rate where it is. So if we leave the rate where it is, what does that accomplish for us? About 50,000 a year, right?
I'll go back and, and do those calculations and send it all out to you. But yes, I, I believe that's about what it would be.
So I think that would be the thing that we have to make a decision on between now and next Thursday, is that we have to decide, do we want to fund those positions by raising it to the CPI or do we not want to fund those positions and leave it at the same rate? Knowing next year we'll have to raise it probably beyond the CPI to be able to make that up.
So what I'll do is I'll, I'll do some calculations and send it all out to you so you have some time to think about it and evaluate the options. Laura will be here on Tuesday for Cal. You can discuss it then. And then she can provide me with the direction for the following Tuesday on the 27th on the ordinances for the tax levy and for the budget, public hearing.
That sounds good.
Okay.
And we make a decision. Mark?
I guess the last thing, are there other taxing options like liquor tax? I see others have a higher one that would close some of that gap too.
There, there is. It's just balancing the, with the businesses because certainly we want people to come into these businesses and, and patronize them. It's the same thing with the gas tax.
The last time we, we raised that tax, there were people in the audience that wanted to talk about it.
Yes. Yes, definitely.
And what are we at now again? Refresh my memory on the tax.
For the liquor tax is at 2%.
2%, okay.
And there are some neighboring communities that are at 3% with the liquor tax.
I don't know the last time I walked into a restaurant and checked and see what their tax rate was on the wine we were going to have for dinner. The same thing with gas. I don't think I've ever looked at it and thought, wow, I'm going to buy my gas in Geneva because they don't have the same tax that we have on Batavia. I guess that doesn't, I don't think of that as a, a decision-making procedure.
Okay. We got our margin orders in?
I believe we do.
Okay, that's it on the budget for tonight?
And just a reminder that there were some questions that were posed and were posted on the website. And the answers are there for you to review. And if you have any other questions, you know, go ahead and send them to Laura and myself and we'll post those as well.
Okay. Does anybody from the public have any comments or questions on the budget?
I have one more comment that I forgot about.
Alan?
One of the things that I've done in the past is I've asked several people that I know, both in accounting and other businesses to, you know, get a chance, pull up our website, look at the budget and just come up and see if you can find something 50 or 100,000 dollars that you could tell me that you could get rid of, that you think, just from the outside looking at, that you think you could get rid of. They found a few small things, but nothing that could come up with 50 or 100,000 dollars to fund a position or to keep us from having to raise taxes to create the revenue that we needed for that. I think that speaks volumes that the staff that we have, the finance department that we have, gets it to the point where what's in front of us is truly just an operations budget. There isn't a whole lot in there that you could sit down and page by page argue out and say, you know what, we don't have to raise taxes. We could, we could cut 100,000 dollars out of this budget here. So I think that that's something that we should be proud of and that's something that we should thank our staff for, that each and every year they figure out how to make that happen with what we have.
I agree. Sometimes I think we're just way too frugal with our, with our budget. I mean, we could sit in this room right here tonight and look at the carpet that's been needed to be replaced for how many years and the mixed match of all the different chairs that we have. And I go into a lot of different city halls for different reasons with my employment. And I always make a point of going into their council chambers to take a look. And I gotta tell you, there's no council chambers in this area that look like ours.
But your chairs have ombre color there with the red to the brown.
That's a custom.
I'm sorry?
That's antique finish.
A lot of other places. Okay. So that's it with budget? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to go on then to item 18, which is project status.
I'll be brief. Just wanted to make sure, I think Anthony sent out an email message to everyone to please respond to him regarding your availability for meetings through the end of the year. So if everybody could take some time this week and just let him know if you know of any particular meetings where you're going to have a conflict and not be there. If there's any of those where a lot of people are going to be missing, maybe we can just cancel those and let everybody have a, a day off there. The 2019 meetings calendar, I apologize, we've been a little bit late with that this year, but that should be on next week's committee of the whole agenda as well to review our 2019 meetings. I said a little bit about this earlier in the meeting, but I think I, it really deserves its own time. The IT department is doing a fantastic job. They support us every day, but right now we're going through a migration to Office 365. And that went extremely smoothly for all employees in the entire city to move over to Office 365. And then over the weekend was the migration of our email to cloud server. And while I, I think the only times that we had issues with it were employees like me who forgot to take the instructions with on how to make all these things reconnect to the exchange server. So it was no fault of theirs, but despite that, they helped all of us who were without that all over the weekends. And so thank you, Howard and crew for that. Still lots going on in community and economic development. We received building plans for two separate spec industrial buildings on Nagel Boulevard. Background and reference checks are being done on the selected candidate for the building inspector code enforcement officer position. So hopefully we'll be able to be making an offer there soon. The planning also, we're going to be consolidating several plan commission meetings due to the holidays and quorum issues. So the November 21st plan commission meeting will be canceled and moved to a special meeting on November 14th. And the December 5th and 19th meetings will also be canceled and a special meeting will be held on December 12th. Had two new businesses open here in the downtown. One is Unique Gifts that opened up at 5 East Wilson. They sell nice antiques and other gift items for sale. And also River Peak Apothecary has opened up right next door to Beard's Guard. It's the second, it's this couple's second Batavia business and it's selling their own skin and beard care products. So kind of ancillary to the Beard's Guard business that they have, which we love. We're also working with the school district and adjacent landowners in regards to the sidewalk by Alice Gustafson School. And we're going to be working on a second land swap with the park district likely in December involving some parking spaces near their administration building and then some others that are along the river path on the south portion of River Street. There are a number of projects underway in our town that are racing against the clock to get their paving done before the plants close. We've got Prairie Commons, the Park District East Side Community Center, and also 800 North Redant. Human Resources is going to host the second monthly meeting of our employee wellness committee. So we're looking forward to identifying some objectives for that group. And Communications Department is meeting with the Walkability Batavia Committee to centralize proposal and presentation to you that is about the bike and pedestrian safety in our downtown area. We also produced a brochure for Northwestern Medical. They asked us to produce this brochure to provide to prospective doctors coming into their medical group about the advantages of living in Batavia. So Chris Cudworth made sure that each one of you had a copy of that brochure before you tonight. And then lastly, the fire department. The antique fire truck sold at auction for 6,400 dollars and the city is planning to use that money to fund windmill restoration. The last thing that I want to talk to you about tonight is that our Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry and Clothes Closet. With our construction project that's going on right next door to them has been at times a pretty significant disruption to the services that they are providing to their clients and also their ability to accept deliveries. And because of that, we thought that it would be a nice gesture for the City of Batavia to make a donation to the Interfaith Food Pantry coming up on the Thanksgiving holiday and in a suggested amount of 2,500 dollars. So I just want to make sure that that is something that everyone is supportive of. Hearing no objections. We'll move forward and make that happen and invite them to our next city council meeting to present that to them. And that's all that I have unless you have any questions for me.
No question from me. Just a quick reminder, December 3rd is the council meeting where if we can all do whatever we can for the toy drive and help out on that evening.
Thanks for the reminder. And I asked Kevin to set up some extra tables in city council chambers along the windows there so people can come and bring their gifts. And if you want to donate cash to the toy drive or gift cards, you can drop those off at the police department.
Any questions for Laura? Nope. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item then is others. Does anybody have other? No others? Okay. Then we're going to go on to executive session, which is for the purpose of setting the price of land for sale. I need a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
No, I need a motion to enter.
Don't wait to get out first?
No, just go to executive session.
Second.
Moved by Intex, second by Salvati. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're in executives. We're going to be going into executive session. There won't be anything to come out of it. Appreciate everybody coming, but we do need to clear the room.